This conference will now be recorded.
It's now started and we'll have to call in order again.
All right, so Tyson Blanchford, Kyle Lewis, Lloyd Colston, Cody Richardson, Brandon Jellings, Dottie Smith, Ian Coon, and Tom Wheatley.
Okay, we have time for public comments. gentlemen, anybody over there want to make a public comment?
I came because I have questions about tiny homes. I have a lot of land that I want to develop. I was told I may be able to get a feel for how that's going to be addressed by listening in the meetings. So that's kind of why I'm here.
Okay. And Mike, you're just in my today. Okay, Josh dragged me down here. Okay, what would approve meeting minutes from last month? Motion?
When we approve.
Okay, let's approve July minutes, Josh. Next, consideration zoning regulations amendments, which is everyone has a copy in front of them. Proposal changes for 2023.
Got extras if you have some.
That part way through dropped off. Left off here in this page.
Um, I just, what I did is I just gave you the whole thing again. Did some minor little things early on. But I think we can pick up unless anybody had any questions about the ones we talked about last month. I was just going to pick it up with article 18, which is on page 13 of that packet.
It's what you said.
I'll try to remember to scroll. So where is article 18?
We're not to the tiny home.
Oh, yes. It's in, I'm just going in order of the articles. It'll be, it'll come up pretty quick. We'll talk about it. So article 18 is the mixed use district. And if you've been on here for any number of years, you probably are familiar with what happened with the family dollar. That was in the mixed use district on North Sun Street. So I took some of that experience and made some modifications to this article. First off, one of the things that I noticed was a little odd, in my opinion, was the front yard setback. It was set at 30 feet, which in that particular area of North Summit is like twice as much as most of the houses are in that neighborhood. And so part of the problem is what that forces is the building, of course, has to be moved back. And another provision in the mixed use district regulations calls for parking not to be in the front of the building. If you're going to push a building back that far, you're encouraging parking to be in front of the building. And so what I did instead was I cut it in half. The 15 feet matches, see what my notes say. It matches the R3 district, which is kind of what that area adjacent to would probably be if it wasn't mixed use, the housing. But matches that the C3 district is only 10. So 15 seems like a pretty good compromise there. The other, the other one that was funny is the rear yard was also 30. So when Family Dollar came in, they're on what we call a through lot. I guess they had two front yards. And so what that meant with 30 feet on both is they had 60 feet that they couldn't develop. Well, the lots only 150 or something like that deep. So that doesn't leave a lot of development. I didn't think of that. Other than that. And so what they did at that time was they requested a variance to their rear, to that setback. So they ended up putting it, I think it was actually closer to 15 feet to that property line anyway. So one of the things that I tried to do when I was redoing these is look at our past cases, like a variance is in particular, and see if, since we granted the variance, well, maybe that means that we need to adjust. So this is, this is one of the reasons that we did that. The other reason that I'm even touching this article is some of those problems that came up with that. When they were built, and I'm using Family Dollar as an example because that's what triggered this. When they designed their site, they put a wall along the first street side. Technically, that wasn't required because they're not immediately adjacent to residential property, the street there. So what I did, if you can see an H there, was I actually added a sentence that says on those sort of lots that that would require some sort of screening. And then I redefined what that meant in that paragraph. So I said, anytime that a commercial use, not butts a residential use, you need to use trees, vegetation, some sort of privacy fencing, planting, whatever. It didn't have to be a fence. It could be any of those things. And then, and then that last sentence of if it's on a through lot, it also means that even though there's a street there, that still applies. So that's the big change in this district. Hopefully that sort of does some of the problem. The other thing that, if you know Mr. Heriter, would like us to put in there, it's not in this language, was to make it to where they can exit onto First Street. Well, I could put that in there, but the mixed use is not just on that corridor. That sounds a little strange. And the reason that they use First Street at all is because of fire truck access. It's just, it was necessary to put a driveway next there. Now, the city has done a number of things in that neighborhood, mostly signage related, like no truck traffic. There's a sign up at Kansas that says you're not supposed to be driving up. But of course, that's local traffic. So they could still drive their trucks down there. But it was in an attempt to keep other, it'd be truck traffic. I don't know how thick that really is, but the police department has been working on that. So that's about all I had to say about that. Anybody have a question about the mixed use district? The next article that I touched on was, and this is, there's not a whole lot of substance to this one, but it's necessary to say something. This district, of this district. We allow these wind energy conversion systems, that's the technical term for wind turbine, in the countryside district, the public district, and the industrial districts. Well, first of all, we need to remove the countryside because we're getting rid of countryside. And so what I chose to do there is I thought, well, since we're taking that out, maybe add it to R1. I don't think that's going to be a big issue. So that was the first change. And then I kind of reworked that paragraph a little bit. The other thing in this article, I found it a little strange the way it was written. Each, currently each section here, each zoning district that allows these systems to be put in place has their own little section in our, which, okay, except that everyone is the same. And so I thought rather than try to adjust this, I would just make that all one concise section because everywhere that it's allowed, it's the same regulations. So that's the main change there. And then there was one other little, I guess there was two other little things. There is a section on page 14 for blade height, and it said that the blades had to be at least 50 feet above the ground. I chose to took that, take that out because the issue I have with that is that means that your towers would have to be a minimum foot tall if you're trying to put that kind of height limit on it. I think as long as it's on private property, wave meets the setbacks that's mentioned in here, the 50 foot rule is not really necessary. And that way you could make the tower a little shorter. Now, in all the time I have been with the city, nobody has requested to put in. So we haven't run into this. We used to have a guy, in fact, he fell around with it. Kind of sells that as part of his company, but we've still, we don't have any in the city.
Good question. Tower height here, we're seeing maximum of 100 feet. Okay, we had two separate meanings about trying to get something to 60 feet. It's an aerial object. Usage is irrelevant. Why don't we just use this for the ham rate, 100 feet, anything on, very good. Combine the rate. Sure. Because I mean, we don't define setbacks, it's solid concrete or asphalt, just setback. Same with the static aerial object. What do you think? Just another paragraph? 100 feet, always thinking of another, yeah.
We still have that other section, but we could make those match. I don't see a reason to make, having those.
No, I just saw it popped out, tower height there. Got a tower height. Who can build one now? It's squishy. Give me 100 feet, I'll ask for 100 feet.
We, we can do that.
Okay. 60.
I agree. I was sitting there wondering, we get 100 here or not? And 60 feet for hams?
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
That makes sense. And then the only other thing in that section was that the site should be secured so people can't just go up to it. That I found in some other regulations and it's kind of similar to what's in the regulations for telecommunication towers. So most people wouldn't want to secure it anyways. Not necessarily have a fence around them, but somehow keep them, people from going up there too. And then I mentioned that last paragraph where I just removed those extra sections because they're identical. So the idea being that we, we simplify the regulations, didn't change them, just simplify it so it's easier somebody to read. Any other questions about wind turbines? I found that what people are usually doing, if they're interested in alternative energy or whatever, is they go with solar. Not interns, because it's just a cheaper way to do it and it's easier. You don't have to deal with all this stuff. Most of those are on rooftops. We've had a lot of requests for solar panels on roofs. It's been really popular over the past several years. So moving into article 20, that's our supplemental district regulations. That is probably where we'll spend the bulk of time on, just talking about the different things in this section. And there's several different topics that came up when I was going through these. So we'll just go one by one through them. So the first one I came across was the corner visibility section 20 dash four. Last month, we talked about the definition for site distances and we, I said we were going to remove that from the definition first because it was a little bit conflicting with what's in this section. So in this section, the rest of the contents that are the same, I didn't put that in here, but the rest of the contents are the same. The only thing that's different is in that definition, there was a reference to alley intersection. And so I just moved that language into here. So at an alley, you have to have at least that triangle that's five feet on each side, which makes it a little bit easier to get out. For the most part, because of the way our property lines are in the city, there's going to be that much anyways. But it's just good to have that, that information there. So the next topic that I wanted, this is a new topic. It's kind of a nationwide trend. What's happening across the country is that they're trying to eliminate single family zoning. But we technically still have it. But what's, what we could do, and this is where this language comes from, is establish what's called accessory dwelling units. We have some of them already, especially kind of in the downtown, not downtown necessarily, but kind of in the downtown area, that core part of the city, where somebody's got a garage apartment or something like that. So that's kind of what these are. The main difference here is now we're defining what, what it is. We're also adding a few regulations to it. And we're allowing them in the R1 district, but they have to get a conditional use permit. That's not really a whole lot different than what we would do today because we already require somebody to get a conditional use permit in that district if they want more, it's a single family home. So mostly what this is doing is it's just defining what one of those is. The other thing is it has to be accessory. And so that's why there is an 800 square feet limit to the size of it. Let's face it, anything much larger than that, that's not an accessory structure. That is a full blown second dwelling. An 800 is an arbitrary number. I saw numbers down closer to 300 all the way up to well over 1,000. 800 was just kind of in the middle of all that. The other thing is because it's accessory is it needs to be accessory. So it needs to be smaller than the primary dwelling. So it shouldn't be taller, that sort of thing. But what we're looking at mainly is what we would probably call mother in law house, something like that. That's probably the more colloquial term there, but that's kind of what these are. The one big thing that I stuck in here, and I saw several places, is that in order to do that, the owner has to live in the primary house. And so we're not talking about a landlord situation. That's a duplex or we're treating it like a duplex. So that's a two family situation. And so that wouldn't apply here. Again, for the most part, this isn't really changing what we do. It's just giving a definition and explaining, explaining what it is that we're trying to do.
My question at this point is you have stated this is an arbitrary figure. What is our defense? If someone were to say, not only is it arbitrary, but it's a preparation?
We can always, they could always request a variance in that situation if they wanted a big one. Is probably my first argument there. But the other thing is we had this, it's just another one of those things. You have to, you have to have a limit somewhere.
Right.
And so that's just the number that we showed that we could change that number, obviously before we go any further if we wanted to. But we have to have a way to determine if it's actually an accessory or if it's a primary use. Is that even remotely in through what you were saying?
Yes, it does. And I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm looking down the way more plans of what we can and cannot do. And I could see someone coming up at the end of that road and saying, I got a lawsuit here.
But again, that's the first step. You have the opportunity to request a variance in that situation. So you could present your case before the border zoning appeals and argue that that's, in your situation, it's, it's not acceptable. Maybe your house is a 3,000 square foot house, so 800 seems less small. But yes, I understand what you're saying. That's partially why I borrowed very heavily from, I think it was Alifa. Alifa, so a little bit bigger city that deals with this sort of thing a little bit more. And I mixed it in with some other cities too. They're, they're very heavily influencing whatever, yeah.
So R2 and 3 overall allow this. R2 allows duplexes, right?
It actually does today and would allow duplexes.
So you could just make a second, can you just build a second home?
That's, that's how I'm interpreting it.
R2, in R2 and R3, you could just build a second house on that lot anyway.
Correct? And in that case, technically, I, I struggle a little bit with that because that's not really what's supposed to be happening in an R2 district. What's supposed to be happening is a traditional duplex, right? That's what we're really looking for. But that's not really what it says. It says that a two family dwelling. And so I loosely allow a second dwelling in a situation like that. Not a lot of that happening. Most of the time what you're actually seeing is a duplex. But in this situation, that second one really needs to meet this definition if it's not a duplex. And for the most part, we're not going to see anything different because that's kind of what they're looking for anyways, was a house that's, that's smaller than the main house.
Yeah, and also the part of, the owner living in the main house. I would see when you, when they start building, that would be the case. And in 10 years when they sell it, anybody checking who bought it, who's living in what? I'm guessing not.
Probably not. That's, that was one of the things I found when I was doing my research, that some had said we want that provision in there, but yes, it is difficult to enforce that.
But I guess at the same time, they're just build two houses and have both as rental and sort of illegal anyway.
Any other concerns about that?
Is this the area that you were saying would deal with tiny homes or is there more?
More kind.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're going to get to that here pretty quick. The next, the next section is that licensed damage to communications is what the section needed, I think it's called, that we talked about in June. And based on our discussion just a little bit ago, we need to go down to height limitations and change that 60 to be 100, which means we probably don't even need that part about the zoning administrator. And then anything over 100 would still require a conditional use permit. So I'll just kind of, we're just basically simplifying that. And we went kind of back and forth on that anyway. But I understand what you were saying, Tom, of that being a little odd that certain vertical structures can be one height and others certain structures can be, to make much sense.
I was sitting over there thinking, okay, I'll put up my 100 foot tower and call it.
Yeah, Ben Turpin. And then return.
The brakes are already on.
Where do we get the tiny houses? I used to thought they're just cabins without plumbing.
Nope, they're going to have to have plumbing.
It's firewater, it's a cabin.
Unless somebody had any questions about those towers, since we went over them, I didn't plan on really spending very much time on it at all. So the next section of this code is fencing. We actually kind of broached this topic a couple of years ago. Didn't, didn't really go anywhere, but we did have a discussion. But that we need, we need to at least look at some of the changes that I'm proposing here. So first of all, what I did was change that first opening paragraph that says no fence should be constructed unless it's constructed in conformance with these regulations. So it just simplified what, what is being said. And then the next paragraph on page 18 at the top there. Part of these strike throughs, don't let them get you too confused. Most of those are because I'm re- orienting the different sections. But basically that first one, we, what I talked about there is a fence or wall may project to or enclose any yard, but they have to have to meet the rest of the regulations. It also notes that if there's an easement involved, that the access associated with that easement has to be maintained. Now, we allow fences to be constructed on easements. What we say is that that is going to be subject to whatever the requirement of easement is. So what I'm trying to say there is if, say it's a utility easement and there's an electric line under there. The electric company needs to come in and replace that line. Well, they will remove the fence at your expense and probably are not going to replace it. So it would be their property or responsibility to, to put it back if that's what they want. That's how we've been handling it. Usually what I tell people is you're doing that at your own risk. They, I know I'm aware of the easement here. I would tell you not to put it on there, but there's certain situations when that's actually doesn't make sense because of the way that easement runs across the property. So it would make more sense for them to prepare themselves for that or put a gate on it or something like that. That's only for your larger lots where you're going to run into that. Because in a smaller, like our mains established subdivisions, everything's in the alley. And so you're not seeing very much of that activity. So it's, and it's also in some of the other districts like Crestwood, you're seeing some of that out there, but they don't have, they don't have alleys. And so there's, they're really all of the lots, but.
I'm going to question about, we've got an area that was maybe previously developed and there's a new development. Then there's HOA or covenant says you can't have fences for shits. Is that just reverse? People say, no, it used to be, you could use to have a fence here because I have it in the city. But.
Covenants generally will supersede our regulations. Now, that's kind of weird because I don't enforce covenants. I have no authority whatsoever to enforce a covenant. That has to be enforced by the HOA or the courts, whatever the situation needs to be. So if there is a covenant that I'm aware of, I will tell somebody. But that's about as far as it goes. They, I, I have issued permits in cases where I thought there might be a covenant because I don't have any authority to not issue that permit.
Yeah, that's all what the real estate permit sets later.
I try not to do that because that's just, I'm going to get wrangled into a lawsuit if I do that too much. Even though I don't have any authority, they're still going to call me in the court if they're going to ask why. So when I know about a covenant, I will inform people, hey, you know, I could give you this permit, you can go build that fence, but your HOA is going to make you tear it down or it's going to find you. So don't do it. We don't have a lot of those in town. Country Club of States is the main one that, that has regulations that have anything to do with, oh, not just fences, all sorts of different. Most of the rest of the subdivisions we have, they, Crestwood is one, for example, they have covenants, but they generally just say, oh, the zoning regulations apply now because when we developed that, but it was developed in the 20s. It was outside the city limits, so they put those in place. That's what I'd have been told from various people that live out there. They still have an HOA out there. As far as I know.
They stopped, I mean, they're not collecting money.
So it's kind of. They don't collect, they don't collect dues or anything out there?
No. I think they didn't.
So the next kind of change that I put in there was the height. the next kind of change that I put in there was the height. Currently we allow up to an eight foot privacy fence in a residential district. The issue with an eight foot fence, there's multiple issues. One of them is according to the building code, that's a structure. And so it has to be built as such, which means it's going to have to be more heavily reinforced, bigger posts. So footing, right?
It'll be engineered.
It's just, but it's going to be engineered. And so when people find out about the extra requirements for an eight foot tall fence, they usually pack off anyways. We, I thought about just making that seven instead of eight because that's not a requirement at seven. But the thing is, if you go into your, your Lowe's or your Home Depot, six foot is what you're going to find anyways. Six foot is generally enough to give privacy. And for the most part, that's what people put out of this stuff anyways. So I propose just changing the language to say, I don't know why we ever let me do that was, I don't know why we did that. So I was probably just changing. And then the other part of fence height in the front yard, we have a provision in there right now that's incredibly confusing. It says that for the, well, do I have that language in here still? Maybe I don't. The previous language was talking about requiring the height to be equal to the required depth of the front yard. So if there was, if your property had a 25 foot front yard setback, you had to go back 25 feet from the edge of the road. Not the, not the front yard because that doesn't make any sense. And once you got to that point, you could go up to six feet. Well, the problem is that how do you, how do you really measure that? And in a lot of situations, it, that just, that doesn't solve the problem of visibility, which is the whole point of lowering it in the front yard. That you've probably seen in some areas of town where there is a six foot privacy fence in the front yard. And if there's a driveway next to it, it's incredibly difficult for that person to see when they're backing. So that's why, um, there is any lowering at all. So what I proposed was to simplify that regulation to where if it's in the front yard, if it's in front of the house, it drops down to four feet automatically. That's what most people are doing anyways. There's a few cases where somebody just really wanted their privacy fence in their front yard. And so they attempted to fit into these regulations. But it's a lot easier to explain in my shoes if we just change it to where it's four feet in the front yard. Backyard, don't care, side yard, don't care. So if they have a big side yard, you can go up to six feet in that side yard. Unless it's the corner lot, we'll get to that in a second. And so the language there is the fence shall not extend nearer to the front yard. No, that doesn't make sense. That's on the corner lot, skipping ahead. So any fence that extends beyond the front wall has to be dropped in, according to what I proposed to. Do I have any issues with that kind of language? Now, corner lots, there's new issues because how do you determine what the front yard is? So where can you put this? So we, we've always had regulations about corner lots, how to deal with fences. The wording here is a little bit different than what it is today, but it still shows the same basic thing. You can have a fence in the, both the front and the side yard. That's, that's okay, but it's going to probably have to be that four foot that we talked about above. The other thing is it cannot be in the, the side triangle that we talked about earlier, which is kind of goes without saying. We don't want to have fences that are obstructing the view of cars turning on the street. So not, not really new language, maybe a word a little bit different. And then the other thing is in that situation, the zoning administrator determines which is the front yard. Which is the same thing that happens when building a house on a corner lot. The setbacks, you don't necessarily need to have both of them be the same front yard. So one of them is lesser. Usually in that case, we call the front yard the yard where the door faces, for the street that door faces, that's the front yard. And the side yard is the secondary one. So in most neighborhoods, and especially in established art city, the north south street is the front and the avenue is the side. Not always the case, but that's generally what ends up happening. Institutional uses, we had traditionally allowed a taller fence there. Institution offenses, institutions are defined in the definitions in chapter two, in article two. We're talking about schools, like a daycare, maybe a daycare, churches, those sorts of things that are allowed in residential uses or residential districts. But they're not residential uses. And so they have a little bit different standards. Mostly that's for, uh, like on a playground. Sometimes they'll have the taller fence, probably not privacy fence in this situation. It's a, it's going to be more like a chain link or something like that. Sometimes it's necessary for them to have a little bit higher fence. If for another reason, then when they're playing kickball, it's just that much more to keep them from kicking those guys.
One of the things that's been brought up several times is a four foot fence for a dog. It's easy for them to scale, but a five foot fence is not. And so people have asked, I've had at least three asked, can you have a five foot fence? Because a four foot bench is too easy for them to scale and find dogs.
What, what do we think about that? The main, the main reason that it's even, again, that it's dropped at all is because of visibility. Now, if it's a chain link fence, it's not really affecting visibility. But we, this doesn't really differentiate on the type of fence. That might be one way around that. If they're willing to make it a chain link instead of a privacy fence, then it could be a little bit taller.
I mean, I understand visibility, you've got several spots in town, but that is one thing they brought up about. The front yards and letting your dogs out in the front yard. If they're jumpers, they're gone.
Yeah, you could talk about seeing through it, but you have to define that. Now again, unless you specifically said just chain link, you said had visibility. They could.
There would have to be a percentage of some sort, right? To do that. One, one way to do that as a whole, because I've had the argument from some of my fence contractors in the front yard too. Well, I'm just building a chain link fence, what difference does it make? Well, it doesn't, it's not separated in here. All fences are being regulated the same way, no matter what style fence. And so that's how I've defined it. Trying to think of a good way to deal with that.
Well, I'm not advocating whatever, I'm just presenting what was.
Seems like you're always getting run into issues. Build bigger fence, you got bigger dogs that can still get over it. Four foot just seems reasonable for a front yard fence.
Yeah, pretty soon it looks like a frozen or something.
I actually found a few cities where it's three feet. That was after, three feet, it's not really a fence anymore.
It's just decoration.
It's just, it's just the decoration. At, at least, at least the four feet is kind of that standard height of a chain link fence, residential grade. Yes, you could build six feet, but obviously that one's too. And, but you can build any height, actually.
I think you're nudging them to go to a chain link, you know, if you're at four feet. I mean, you don't see too many wood fences around here that are four feet. So that helps from the visibility standpoint. And I was thinking about a four foot fence, if you're driving a car, still a visibility hazard, I think.
Your window's down here, plus car ride, pretty low. So I'd keep it as four, same.
We also have a few situations around town where four feet is too tall. Where there's retaining walls. But I don't have a way to, I don't think we want to write it where that's the case.
I think I believe it. Other question is curious, the houses that face the avenues or whatever? Does this all apply to them as far as front yard and side yard? I'm just thinking, if you have a house that you're in their backyard, they can have a six foot fence right down the side, right down the side of your yard. But if it's your fence, you can't have a six foot fence on the side.
Are you talking about like in the corner lot?
Yeah, the ones that are in the alley, the houses are like in the alley, basically. They're like a half lot that, that face the avenues and they're like, it's still the backyard.
They would still, those are tricky.
Yeah.
They would still, that, that alley house, for lack of a better term, would still have to drop the fence down to four feet in their front yard.
Right.
So.
But if it was their neighbor's backyard fence, it could be.
Up to the front of their house, it could be a six foot.
Even past the, even out to the sidewalk?
No, no, just up to the edge of the house is how I, based on the way.
If it was their neighbor's fence and it was their neighbor's backyard, it could be in front of their, it would be, it would be in front of their house.
Theoretically, yes.
As long as it's their fence, I do. I'm just thinking about that. I don't care.
It's, that's one of those where, again, the zoning administrator is going to have to look at it to figure out what the best scenario is there. Once, obviously, once you get close enough to the road, it's a moot point because it has to drop down anyways.
But you were getting rid of that part.
The problem is that backyard for that front house really isn't a backyard anymore in that situation. It is a side yard.
It's a sidewalk and a side yard that has a six foot.
Up to that property line, up to that, uh, front of the house.
I was thinking about that. Doesn't matter, be either way.
It, it is hard to, it's hard to write a regulation for that, to be totally honest. I definitely understand what you're saying because I have run into some interesting issues, especially on a corner lot, especially with alley houses. Oh, where were we? Okay, so here's the, the meat of fences. And this is where we kind of got stuck the last time we went over this. Right now, we don't have, uh, like a listing of what types of fencing are allowed and what are prohibited. And so what I did was I looked at a whole bunch of cities, and again, I did this a couple of years ago originally, to see what sort of fencing materials they allow and what they prohibit. One of the main things that triggered this discussion, I'm going to be totally honest with you, is pallet fencing. And the issue with that is if you're just using pallets, it's incredibly difficult to build a fence properly in that situation. What we've seen, um, for the most part is they'll put the, like a post at the end of one. And then they'll, some sort of way, fasten two piles together and then they'll put another post. But the problem is that, uh, DIP tie or bale wire or whatever it was they used, that's not a structural element. It's not going to hold. We've seen them where they collapse in a windstorm. If we had a storm like Windfall had the other day, a fence like that, even a four foot, it's going to flat out there. Because it's just not enough to hold it up. The other thing I've seen with those is the posts are just T posts. Which is also not going to hold that fence in that, too. Right. The other thing is, um, you're limited to four feet because that's how big a pallet is. And so what's, what we've also seen, and there's, you may be aware of one of them, and I've heard it that way. That's about 10 feet tall or something like that. And it's pallets stacked on top of pallets. I have no idea how those pallets are connected together because there's. So part of what we did was that is specifically listed, it's, it's called out. How did, where did I put that? Oh, under I.
Call the war zone.
Yeah, it's, it's cast off, secondhand or other materials not originally intended to be used for fencing material, including pallets. What we see a lot of, uh, I've seen plywood fences where somebody just, or OSB, you know, where they just, uh, put that up and that's, that's their fence. So as you know, if you're familiar with construction at all, that stuff isn't meant to be open to elements. And so it's going to rot way faster than a proper treated, uh, fence picket or whatever. And so that's what most of those in the prohibited are, the wood related ones, is, is cases where it's just, it's not meant to be an outdoor fence material. OSB is meant to be the stuff that's on the house and you put siding on the top of it. So unless you're putting siding on the top of your fence, it's not really a building. It's not fence. I'm not going to say it's not a building material, it's, it's a building material. The other thing in this section, um, is your metal type fences. Sheet metal is not a fencing material, not again, and that's a building material.
I was going to ask about that.
Corrugated metal, that's roofing material.
Have you, on the way to the fair last night, I drove through Windfield, turn left on 14th, I think. And there's a pretty new looking fence made out of, wait, metal roofing material. It's all trimmed out top and bottom. And I thought, wow, that looks a lot better now out of wood.
Yeah, it was funny, but Phil doesn't allow it.
They don't? I thought, that's a, that's actually a pretty good looking fence. I thought that yesterday when I drove through there. I mean, it's like a building, it's not scapped against a rail lines. I don't know.
Now, I think you, you could build a, a fence that's a metal type fence like that with solid panels, but that's a, that's a fencing gray. I mean, that exists, that's a possibility you could do that.
I think some.
But it's not actually the roofing material.
Yeah, this was just, this was, I think there's some companies that actually sell the trim and all this stuff to make a fence out of that material now.
The thing about that is though, I specifically in the permitted, there is a section that says any generally accepted fencing materials used in the fencing industry. So if that became a norm, the, the fencing industry, whatever that is, accepts, then we could look at it. And what I would ask for then is you need to provide me with a picture of what that's going to look like, what the final product is. So maybe you found an example of it somewhere. Then we'll, I may potentially allow.
You ought to drive by there when you're, same to me. It's an industrial, and it's kind of an industrial part of town, right off, right off the main street there. It doesn't look like a cheap fence.
That's interesting.
That could be why it's allowed to in this area.
They, they may have chosen to be a little bit more less.
Yeah, I mean, it looked a lot like that. I think if you just put the panels up, it doesn't look like, they had the trim top of the house.
Well, and I even saw examples of pallet fencing where they'd have done that, but what's really happening there is they're pulling usually, they're pulling the pallet apart and they're rebuilding the fence using the boards and pickets. That's a little bit different scenario because now you're building it like a regular picket fence.
It's still a lower pallet.
Yeah, it's not really a pallet. Now, the problem still is though, pallet wood is cheap.
It warms, it's not treated. It warms, it's not treated.
It's not going to be much different than your OSB for times.
Right, corrugated though. That's the thing, you could take any materials, you could take brand new materials and something could end up terrible. So it's hard to. It's hard to put the rules on.
So some of the things in this list. You can kind of go back and forth on. One of them being chicken wire. And another one being your stock panels. Which often referred to like as the cattle panel. The problem with those kind of fences is they're really, they're really meant to be temporary. They're not designed to be like, you won't see that on a farm where it's just, well, you will see. But generally speaking, if they want their cattle or their horses or whatever to stay in for long term, you're not going to see that. You're going to see the, you're going to see barbed wire, you're going to see that wire. I don't know if I have that as an example or not. I don't know what that's even called, I'm not a farmer anymore.
Woven wire.
Well, I guess it's a woven wire type fence. That, yeah. I mean, it has all sorts of different names. That's what you would see more of long term. And. I don't know that we. That's not spelled out, that kind of fence really. But I would say that that's a generally accepted fencing material. That stuff, woven. I don't know why I didn't have that in the list. But I don't have it prohibited either. And then, of course, the other allowed ones are the typical ones like chain link, wrought iron. Vinyl, wood. The wood. Privacy fence, panels, stucco, or any kind of thing like that. Those are all fine. Just the more temporary or the ones that are built with materials that aren't really fencing. Does anybody have any heartburn about any, either of those lists, like what's on them?
I think the controversy before was, it was just, we're trying to, somebody was trying to say, used material can't be, can't be used. And that was a. I think the way this is more like works or. It doesn't just say, because you know, somebody just stored on a brand new chain link fence, I'm going to put it back up. That's still going to look good. So just to say, no used material, I think was probably the controversy before.
Yeah, and I, I would be just fine with used materials if they're under change.
Right.
I don't see that as a bigger problem. Because chain link fence, that's not last, that's not last forever. It can get rusty and nasty, but. Normally stays with the coating on it, the gas lines coating on it.
The electric fences limited to 24 volts. That's no fun. That's PC, that's okay.
Yeah, it's PC. Yeah, that's the rest of this section. We don't allow barbed wire, that's, that's standard. We've, we've not allowed barbed wire inside the city. As we construction anyways. As far back as I know, like long before I even ever here. Unless it's on perimeter fencing and meets those guidelines. So if it's in a commercial or industrial area and they want that on the top of their six foot tall chain link fence, that's fine. They can put it up there, but it needs to be. Basically, it needs to not be nuisance. And if it's lower to the ground, like a typical barbed wire fence would be around the cattle pasture or whatever, it's a nuisance. It meets the definition of nuisance. Now, there is an exception there for those that were on ad property, they got annexed into the city, especially if they got annexed involuntarily. That they're allowed to keep it there as long as it's far enough back from the. From the roof or the sidewalk. We don't have a whole lot of that going on. I don't, I don't really know of any, there's some preexisting that just never got taken down, but. There's, we don't have very much barbed wire that's, that's not perimeter fencing. And then, of course, electric, we only want that inside of the fence for the same reason. It's just. Because you got little kids walking to the sidewalk. Don't want that, so we'll, we'll allow it, it just needs to be inside the fence. And of course, though, those animal containment systems, the shock collars, I can, that's not the same thing as an electric fence, so those, those are definitely. And of course, we don't allow for the even more extreme reason. Any of that looped wire like you see on top of a prison fence. We don't have any prisons in our city, so we don't need to have provisions for that.
Legendary.
Those aren't required, who else might? This next section, I put this in here because I saw it somewhere else, but I'm not necessarily advocating for it. One way or the other. But it talks about when you build. A privacy style fence with the pickets, that the finished side of the fence should be on the outside of the property. Now, of course, you run into a problem when you're building up on a shared property line, who, whose side is the outside? So that, that creates an issue, but usually in that case, the property owners can agree. Or they build like the shadow block style where they put pickets on both sides of the fence. I've seen that happen before too. It's more expensive, obviously, to install the pickets. But that language just tells people that's the way the fence is supposed to look. The finished, the way that those are designed is that they're supposed to be on the outside anyways. I find it odd personally. Why you would want to build it like that, but that's, that's not just me. But that language would make that a requirement where it has to be that way. And then. This last paragraph is new language. But it's, it just goes in the non-conformant. So if somebody has one of these fences on the prohibited list, for example. If it's sound. We're not going to make them take it down unless it meets this provision here. So if an 81 hour wind comes through and blows the thing over. Then you're going to have to. Build it back, fence it back with materials that are permitted. That's all that's saying. We kind of use the same language for everything when it comes to non-conforming uses. If, if it's damaged by more than 50%, you have to. You have to get rid of the non-compliance issue. That's all for fences, so let's get into tiny houses.
I'll see you.
He was here just in case somebody had a question about code for fencing. So we talked a little bit about tiny houses last month because. It shows up in the table for residential. So we talked about it a little bit last. So. The reason that I even thought we needed a section on tiny house, because when it comes down to it, a tiny home is a home. It's no different than any other home, a single family home. And so that's how I've been regulating it so far. Is that as long as it's meeting the basic requirements of the building code. Of residential code. That it's allowed. The only thing that I do enforce is the regulations. Regarding the axles and that sort of stuff. A tiny home today has to be placed on a current. These regulations actually say the same thing. If you were bringing in a tiny home. Whether, whether you're bringing it in and it defines that as a tiny house on wheels. It's something like you bought it in Skyline. You brought it in like that on a trailer, that's a tiny house on wheels, that's all that means. Even those that we require the wheels to be removed and set on a foundation. And that's how I've been interpreting these all along. A tiny home also though could be something that's built on site as a kit. That does exist. And not even just a kit, maybe just built it, built it that way. Those are obviously okay throughout today. The main reason though that we want this section in here is I have a lot of lots. And we've kind of done, have done this with some of our lot splits and stuff in the past. We have a lot of lots that are too small to build a house on and meet the regulations for minimum lot size. And so what this does is say, hey, if you can meet the requirements of this section. We're going to let you build on one of those non-conforming lots because. We have housing shortage. And not only that, the lot is otherwise worthless and we're going to have a problem with abandonment. We've had some of that before. Where the house burns down, they can't build on it, and so they just let it go and the city ends up. So not a good situation for, for the city. But the main reason is. To get people to build more housing, info housing. That's, that's kind of what we're shooting for. We, it's not just those weird ones where it was an alley house, we also have a few cases where the lot is too narrow. The primary example of that is the old shotgun houses. There's a few places around town where the shotgun houses are built in a 25 foot lot. 25 by 132 is not big enough according to our regulations to build a house on. And so in that situation, if that shotgun house burned down. They now have a worthless 25 foot lot. This section would allow them to put either, well, a shotgun house could go back there. And they wouldn't have to meet the minimum lot size. They would still have to meet setbacks. So that could be still a challenge on a 25 foot lot. Not so much on the alley. See, what did I? It's going to depend on the district that you're in. But it's 15 to 25 feet in the front. And the sides are. I think the sides are pretty much the same in all districts, 10 feet. So on a 25 foot lot, the widest you could have in that situation is a 5 foot. This isn't necessarily going to help those small lots. However, there's always the variance route, because that's really what they're going for. The problem is we still would like to maintain separation from the house door for fire protection. And if we did that too much, well, and in the variance public hearing, that would come up. If it was going to be. They wanted to put it right off property line, we're going to probably say no because that's, I'm going to get that fire separation. Unless the house and the door was further away, I guess, but that would, we just have to play that bear just like we always do with fairytale. But it would be a hard time. That's what I'm trying to say. But the idea being that instead of making somebody build it on a 50 foot lot, which is kind of our lower end. Minimum lot size, you could build on a, maybe like a 35 foot, because I have a number of those. Or in the case of the alley house, it may be wide enough, but it's not deep enough. Now, you may still have problems with that. This, this, the idea is to try to open this out a little bit more so that they can build on some of these and. And we may find that it doesn't alleviate anything because they still can't get setbacks. I don't know. That's why I'm trying it out like this. If I come into that and people keep trying to do it, but they're requesting a variance every single time. That tells us that we need to go back and look at it again. But that's the idea. The only other option we would have is to lower our threshold for minimum lot size. And I don't know if you want to do that across the board.
Is there a. I'm just building a house. Is there a minimum square footage?
There is a thing on here that says.
I'm not building a tiny home up, I'm just trying to build a house.
This says, and this is, this is Winfield's language. If it's a single occupant, it has to be 170 square feet. And if it's for every additional occupant, it needs to be at least 100 square feet.
So we have that? A minimum home size?
No, other than this, we don't have that. And in fact, this is the new regulation, so we don't have anything right now that says it has to be. Now, I take that back a little bit because the. International Residential Code does have a minimum requirements for certain rooms. But it's less than that. I think it's like 70 square feet or something along those lines.
Yes, I'm just thinking. It seems like a lot of stuff, we're still, the tiny homes still have to be permanent, they still have to meet setbacks. There's a lot of stuff here really to say. Minimum lot size. Should be different, or if your house is small enough, we'll let you build it on a small lot. We just need something that says. Some percentage of, you know, house can't take more than this percentage of the lot or something?
Well, that's the other thing in that table, I think that table's in here.
And that's pretty much what I'm saying is I can build back my shotgun house now.
That's what I'm trying to do.
I mean, it's like this whole thing essentially just says, I can build back a small house.
The other problem though is. Under the current regulations. If you take up more than 50% of the lot, remember how big the lot is. You're, you're out of appliance. So a house can only take up 50% of the, of the lot.
Right.
So if you had a 5,000 square foot lot, the largest house in that situation, you could possibly build this 2,500 square feet. Which sounds big, but that's not very big because you have setbacks that you're still going to have to comply with. So you really can't be a 50% in that situation.
Can we just grandfather in small lots? I mean, you're not going to allow any more lots to be split to be made than a small, right? We're just talking about lots that are already too small. That probably already had a house.
Well, then that could be the argument to reduce what our minimum lot size is. That may be.
Maybe the minimum. But allow grandfathered in small lots to get rebuilt on it. Like the minimum is still whatever it is. It's just like the fencing, if you have the old fence, I mean, when you tear it down, you got a small lot where I'm going to, where I let you keep using it.
So kind of treat it as a. A non-conforming lot. We do have provisions for non-conforming lots. But it's only to the extent that. That the lot can be, it doesn't have, you don't have to change it. What we could almost do in that situation, I didn't propose to change that Article 22 at all. Is we could rewrite that section so that. It says that you can rebuild on a lot if it's non-conforming.
If it ever was built on the board. So I don't know.
Can I get some clarification there? The, the way that I look at it, which is where my focus is, that's what I'm going to talk about. There are two parcels, there are two addresses. One of those parcels is six lots and the other one is five lots. Each of those lots is 25 feet. So they're partial together, but there's, there's five lots on this one address. So. And, and I weigh in all the options, but I want to know what's legal before I progressively make a solid plan as to how I'm going to develop this. But. Depending on what I learned tonight, one of my options was to buy that back into single lots. Of course, building a five foot wide house is not really considered, it has to be eight and a half feet wide in order to be built according to the proposed code. 25 blocks on, or 25 foot lot is not built without variance on every single one of them. No matter how I arrange the units.
So we're saying, well, we're meaning, are perfect. So when you re-split that, it would have to meet the minimum.
Yeah, then what would happen in your situation that he's talking about is he would have to plant basically into those 25 foot lots. Now, in that case, that would not be allowed because it does not meet the minimum lot size. This is more about the pre-existing page. So. And actually, in the subdivision regulations, if, I think there's a minimum. I don't remember exactly how that was worded. But it's part of the planning process that would be mixed. Basically, the planning commission would say, well, that's not meeting the regulations and so. You, you're going to have to go back and make some ones that are more of a little block size. So for, and of course, it's going to depend on what that zoning district is. But for your residential zonings, it would be. But for your residential zoning, it would be.
I'm way down on South Second, fifteen hundred South, fifteen hundred South Second.
I think that's probably mixed use today. But so we would look at the R two is what would usually play there. And for a single family, it's fifty-six hundred square feet is the minimum lot size. And then three thousand for a three thousand in addition for the two-family and two thousand for the traditional one after that. So if you were building a tiny house, which is probably a single family, you, you have to have at least the fifty-six hundred square feet in that difference. But you still have to make setbacks on top of that.
Right.
I'm estimating those lots are a hundred and fifty-five feet.
Something like that because it concludes part of the alley.
Yes.
I think we talked about that. So it'd be.
About thirty-five foot, well, thirty-seven and a third.
That would be the absolute bare. And that's probably.
And in order to build it.
You'd still have to do setbacks.
Ten foot on either side, that leaves twenty-seven foot. Seventeen foot, which sixteen foot wide is fairly large, I know.
The, the other reason that this is even a a discussion point is we also have another set of regulations concerning residential design and manufactured homes. And in that section, there's a minimum width of twenty-two feet, I believe it is. So a tiny home that was a manufactured home, that's not twenty-two feet, not going to comply with that section. But this allows it to go all the way down to eight and a half. I don't know where the eight and a half was, that, that, I borrowed that number from Winfield. I don't know where that number came from.
Well, that's.
Maybe that's a design trailer.
With a trailer.
So yeah. That must be where that came from.
That's why, that's the next way to drive down the road. So that's a way to the camper. You need to have a trailer.
Excellent.
So I guess for me, I would, this just seems like a lot to really address something that's not even related to this, especially when tiny home could be permanent or, or came in on wheels, but became permanent. They're really just, we're just talking about, do we want to try to, do we want to? And a regular house doesn't even have a minimum.
Yeah, technically it doesn't, other than the minimum requirements.
It could be small also. I just wonder if we want to just address the small lots specifically. Because I mean, a lot of times you think a tiny home is just going to be on wheels. I mean, a lot of times they stay on wheels. Yeah, I mean, when you watch Tiny Home Nation, they're, a lot of times they're still on wheels. So we're not allowing any of that. I think that's what the person they're going to see is, can I roll in a tiny home? And no.
That's a good point. And it's actually one of the things that came up when I was even talking about it. In fact, a few cities specifically said, well, we didn't, we don't have a definition for that because that is a single-family job. That's, that's how they refer to it.
Yeah, unless you're going to start allowing on trailers or on wheels, then I think it's just a haves. Everybody else, everybody else ready to go?
Where was the twenty-two and a half foot minimum width? Was that on the pre-manufactured?
Yeah, that would be like your standard size home that's built outside.
But if I had built or had a contractor building a house on a foundation or off slab, I can build it as small as I want it to at this point. As long as it met a hundred and seventy square feet for what I'm.
Yeah, the main reason that exists in that language is because what it's trying to prevent is a single-wide trailer. And that's because they're long. They tend to be longer in order to get the same square footage. Most tiny homes or small homes, if we'd rather use that definition, aren't built like that. They're, they're built more of a up square, necessarily.
Two by twenty-sixteen.
Yeah, they're more of a squished if you will. And the reasoning for that is generally people that are upset about living next to a so-called trailer house. That's what they're trying to not see. They're, even though it's built on a permanent foundation. That's, that's what we're trying to get away from is, is that long, skinny. I've seen that in some cities where they squish it and go vertical.
Yeah.
But that's not a trailer. These are.
No.
Those are usually.
So just to clarify, the, the side setbacks we talked about, front and back is fifteen foot. Are you correct?
I think the back is a little bit higher than that. It's probably. I don't have a boring answer.
I was thinking that's what we talked about earlier in the night. Or maybe I was a, I'm a code guy, so I probably got it.
No, I think you're probably right because you're an excuse hitter.
I am.
I think.
Unless across the street it's not a normal white house, it was mixed use.
I'll give you a real definitive answer. So Dottie, we were just explaining, we're just, we were just talking about the implications of defining tiny homes. And the main discussion that we were just having was do we really need to define them? Or are they just a small house that's just, we're pregnant? The reason that I even created that section was to come up with a way for people to build on some of our small lots that otherwise they couldn't build on, like the alley houses and stuff like, so they burned down, they can't rebuild it. So that was the premise behind this was to set up some regulations that allow us for homeless people to build a small lot. So we were kind of debating on how to best approach building on small lots. And that's the real discussion here.
And they still have to adhere to the setbacks.
Yeah, and still have the setbacks.
Still have enough room to do it. And yet adhere to all of the building codes.
Yeah, that will always supersede everything. If a building code is not sure if it's going to.
I mean, I would say if you meet the fifty percent rule in the setbacks, I wouldn't have thoughts on building setbacks over the health of the board.
If we approach it that way, that's when I need to look at our Article twenty-two, twenty-one. That deals with non-conformities. And we could put in some language in that section that that says if the lot is pre-existing, like it was divided in the past before we had regulations or something like that. And the house burned down and can't rebuild, that as long as you don't change the footprints of the pre-exist, of the existing house, I'm just, I'll get over here. Then you could build the house back.
What if you buy a lot that there was a house there thirty years ago, you don't even know what was there?
That presents a.
I was just thinking, if you meet all the other rules, like the.
So we still have to meet setbacks.
Meet the setback, meet the fifty percent.
Yeah, those come up at tax auction.
Yeah, that's usually what it's about.
Yeah, for me, I'd rather have somebody building around this house there, even if it's a tiny little thing on a tiny little lot.
Well, and the sad thing of what happens at a tax auction is people don't do their homework. And so they'll go in and in fact, we've had times when people bought a four-foot slipper house without doing any research. They didn't understand what they were bidding on. And then they come to me and can I build on that? And I'm going to say, do you realize that that lot is only, in fact, it's four feet wide? No, you cannot build on that lot. No, well, yeah, that's like. That's, that's true. I think in that situation, we could say, yes, you can build back on that lot, but you, you gotta meet all those setbacks. So that could mean that you can't, you still can't. If it's a small, if it's a twenty-five foot lot, like we were talking about.
You can get a five-foot house.
Yeah, you may just not be able to rebuild the shotgun house in that case, unless you convince the board of zoning controls to grant you a variance. Which is, which is.
Wait, I forget to.
Bury it.
So is that kind of the consensus that we don't really want a section on tiny homes? We'd rather approach it from that way?
But you want all this orange color.
I completely understand and actually agree. Because even, I was going over this packet today before it came, kind of rehearsing what I was going to say.
Yep.
And I even came across that section and like, and, and sort of the same thing with accessory drilling. It's so like. I wanted to find it so bad. But maybe I wanted to define it at the expense of having an extra regulation area. When the core purpose of that was to be able to go about some of these lots that that were divided before regulation or were divided without being caught if they were after the vision, something like that. And of course, we, this, the board of zoning controls has actually issued a variance in a couple of places where we allow that to happen. So there's a few like that too. So that's what, that's what I'll plan to do is go back and look at that article. And I can, I guess I can bring that back next month. And I will talk to you about what you want to do a little bit more in detail later. So let's keep moving. I got one more big article that I need to talk about tonight. The only other thing in, so there's two little small things in Article twenty. One of them has to do with home occupations. For some reason, I've never noticed this until I really read through this. We had it where you could do home occupations in the ag district, this countryside manufactured home, R one and R two.
But not R three.
I don't know why that, I think it was just an omission. And so what I proposed is go ahead and add to R three district in there so that we're all compliant. And then at the same time, there's a reference to countryside, so just, so that is the only thing that changes there. And then the last section there, I had to reorganize some of the sections in order to get tiny homes in there. So it's less needed if we don't put that section in there. But I still needed to rework that section. There is, we need, we need something on building setbacks because it's a kind of a fallback to that first paragraph. But the next two paragraphs, the next few subsections are very specific to gas stations. And I, I never understood why this was here. Because it talks about where the phone pumps can be and where the cannibie can be. That kind of regulation needs to be in the district regulations, not here. And so that's what my note even was there, that cannibie should meet the yard regulations, the district, which there is not somewhere material number that's put in here. So I'm just striking all that language from that section so that if you want to build a gas station, you just build it according to the district regulations. And Section nine dash six zero one actually has some language on how to deal with the fuel pumps, where they can be. So it's duplicative anyways. So that's, that's what that was about. I guess I have two articles. I'm sorry, sorry. So Article twenty-one was that non-conformities and we wasn't going to touch it, but we are going to touch it if I do this. Obviously, regulations in front of us tonight, so we can't talk about it. So we'll have to push that to another need. The Article twenty-two is about parking. And there was a number of things that came up when I was going through this article. The first one had to kind of do with what is required for off-street parking, loading areas, vehicular storage. For, for the required parking, I don't want to change anything there. It still should be a, it should be a surface, it should be a permanent surface. But I've run into a few cases where like a vehicular storage area, or even in some cases, those driving areas where you drive, storage units is where that comes up a lot. If we were stuck with this really closely, storage units have to be paved one hundred percent. There's just nowhere. Well, basically every storage unit facility we have in town, that's not, they don't follow that. They have a paved entrance in a lot of cases, and then they go through crushed rock or gravel or something like that. And when I've had people approach me about that, they're like, well, that's going to make it where I can't build this. It's going to be too expensive to build and get paved the entire world for it. And so I had attempted to kind of back off of that a little bit in situations like that. But for the required parking, especially the BDA spaces, but really all of the required parking, that still would have to be paid. Just, that's just, I think we're going to have to stick with that. But basically, that's what I'm doing. Just trying to loosen that language up a little bit so that it gives me a little more flexibility on some of these cases where there's a really large area that they need to be able to maneuver on, but it's not necessarily the primary part. Now, when it comes to a place like, say, a restaurant, that's going to be paid. In fact, most of them are not going to want to do it any other way. Because that's just, that's just the way the site is developed. It works a little bit different. The other reason I wanted to kind of relax that just a little bit is it kind of contradicts what we're trying to do with stormwater. The nice thing about a crushed rock or gravel surface is that some of the water can actually seep when it's, when all weather surface, paved surface, all that water. So that's another reason I kind of wanted to relax that just a little bit. But again, parking areas in general, they're required parking. So that's the change that I've approached. The next section that's noted there on page twenty-two, I reworded that, or I added that sentence there because without that sentence, I fear that kind of contradicts what.
I have a question on the parking.
Sure, sure.
There's no requirements on widths or anything like that, is there?
Widths of a parking space?
Yeah, like a, like a driveway. Is that addressed anywhere?
Not necessarily on a driveway with a, a spot, though. Does have regulation that it's not in here, but it's because we could touch it. But it is nine feet by eighteen feet is what the required space is.
And this requirements for the width of driveway?
Not specifically. However, like in the case of a residential, the driveway is going to have to be at least the nine feet in order to meet that definition.
We have quite a few of those old, very, I have one very old narrow driveway.
Yeah, that would be probably why. A lot of them have the, have the, just the paved spot where the tracks are too.
Exactly, that's mine.
That's your stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And quite a few of the rental houses I have had that, or shared driveways.
Yeah, that's everything.
Yeah.
However, other than the required parking, driveways aren't actually required. Now, you're going to have to have a way to do your parking, so you're going to have to have a driveway, which is no way to do that, but. But there isn't anything that specifically talks about how wide it has to be. But that does bring us to our table, our minimum off-street parking requirements. There's a few on the residential that I wanted to touch. Single-family, it had a requirement if the lot was bigger than fifty feet. It had a requirement if the lot was bigger than fifty feet to be three spaces instead of two. I don't know what difference that makes. And so I just say, I just move it back to a single-family home has to have at least two spaces. And in the case of residential, those spaces don't have to be marked out like they would in the commercial. Garage spaces count, but you could also count a space on the driveway. Because it's capable of holding, so even though they're stacked, it's capable of holding that additional car. That's all we're shooting for then, is to try to reduce the number of cars that have to be parked on the street. A single-family, most cases, they have a driveway. Not always, and there's a few places in town that, First Street is an example of that. There's houses on both sides, and there's really no room for driveways, so they're stocked with. No drive, uh, pre-existing, so we're not gonna make them by them driveway. But that, that's where, that's a case where that might be. And then two-family has the same sort of language. And so I just struck it, so it's two per duplex, so they would need to have four spaces.
Is that section, I guess, not as one? So you, how big, how big is one space?
As long as it meets that nine feet by eighteen feet area, it's a space. That's how I would define it, so if you, if you have that.
How much square foot is it?
That much square, well. In order to fit a car in there, it's gonna have to be that, pretty much that's anyways, but. Yes, it would have to be that nine feet wide. I guess cars aren't nine feet wide anyway.
If you wanna open your door.
If you wanna open your door, there's something next to you. Multifamily. In that case, and this is, again, some of this is influenced by some national policy as that. Sometimes having two per apartment is gonna be too much. Now, we don't have any situations in our city where this really is a big issue. But sometimes in the bigger cities where they build those towers. To require two per unit would mean that the parking structure is about the same size as that. It's the building, and that's just a whole bunch of wasted space. Parking doesn't generate very much tax revenue, which is, that's the way the city operates, we gotta, we gotta have tax revenue. And so we wanna have a way to generate more. And so that's part of what that is, making it one per unit. The other thing is, a lot of times, again. Our city, not necessarily, but in a bigger city, not every resident has a car. Anyways, so there's some residents that would actually need zero spaces. But we still need at least one per unit because of the way our city's set up, we don't have a lot of traffic. And so if you live like out where Meadowhead is, you're gonna have to have a car. So we need some minimum parking, so that's why I still left some sort of that there. That's really all of the residential changes. I noticed there's a few of the non-residential uses that. Some of those are a little bit odd, can't read through them, uh, the way they chose to do it. Several of these I just simplified. So banks used to be a, like a incremental increase, or they currently are. Where you have to have a certain amount for the first number of square feet, and then it changes for the next segment. That's, that's too complicated, my book. And so what I changed it to was just one per three hundred square feet. Three hundred is a number that's gonna come up a lot in these, it's kind of a standard for some of these similar uses. So we just changed it to one to three hundred. Bowling alley was an interesting one, it used to be, or currently is, five spaces per lane or alley. Which seems a little.
Excessive.
Excessive? And it's kind of odd, I guess they're figuring that. A bowling team is five, four, five people. What's it called? So I still left that language in there as four per lane, I did shrink it from that before. But I noticed that some other places, and you're seeing this more and more, we don't really have that here. But like if you go to, I think even derbies like this, their, their bowling alley, it has more than just bowling. It also has an arcade, it has, I think it has mini malls in there too. And some of them have other stuff, so. Those sort of uses add to the amount of people that need to park there. But do you really need to have it be the whole hundred percent? Well, I found a city that did decrease the requirement to seventy-five percent. So let's say that it has a restaurant in there. Well, the restaurant wouldn't need to have the whole. What's one per four seats? That's down further on the table. It could be basically one per two seats, because you already have parking for a bowling alley anyways. So you don't really need that much more. The same thing is for hotels, that same language. Like, say, a hotel has a restaurant in it. Well, part of the parking for the hotel is for the rooms. And the guests are likely to utilize that restaurant. Or if it's a conference center, they're, the guests are probably gonna be some of the people that are using the conference center. But at the same time, you also have to account for some of that. Because some people going to a conference aren't staying at the hotel. And so there may actually be more guests at the hotel than their conference attendees, or vice versa, actually. Same thing with a restaurant. A hotel or restaurant is probably gonna attract people that just wanna go eat at a restaurant, they don't wanna stay at a hotel. And so that's why both of those things are layered on top of each other. Let's see, what else do we got here? Community college used to be one spa- one additional space for fifteen students, well. I think that's a little high, or a little low, however you want to look at that. Because we have a lot of students that do have their own cars, even at the high school. There's probably one in five students has a car. I don't know what the real math is there, but I would imagine it's more than a one to fifteen ratio. Based on how many cars are on that property on every school. So tighten that up a little bit. If you've ever been to our high school during the school day, you'll know that they have lots of parking. Some of that is because of the stadium. There's a lot of the kids that park over there because they access to really often. So it's not a great example, but. Anyway, strengthen that up a little bit. And the college, it's probably more than one to five ratio, other than obviously the dorm students don't always have cars.
So I'm putting it one additional for every five students?
Yeah, that was what I proposed. One space per three employees and then one per five students on top of that. When you get to the lower level schools, where the students aren't old enough to drive, just goes back to a classroom thing. So like the, the middle school would have a requirement of two per classroom. So that's already language, that's, that's not changing. A couple other similar uses. I kind of can group them together. Funeral homes are kind of an assembly use anyways, I mean, that's like, Renterman, for example, has the chapel. And so that's why that one is kind of based the same way that an assembly space, like a theater or an auditorium is at. One or four. And it's always determined by the fire marshal, that's how we're gonna, that's the math we would use. Is whatever the occupancy is, based on the fire code that the fire marshal sets, that's how you determine. And we do that like when they're, when we get the plans, and that's when we're generally talking about. And I thought, this was one of the funniest laundry bag. Right now, it requires one space for two washing machines. So, does that mean if they decide that they wanna expand the number of washing machines, I have to tell them to park? I guess. It's weird.
I think a bunch of these are there.
And so what I did was I changed it to a square footage. Use four hundred, that's where I, I used, I saw that in somebody else's. We're talking about motel, hotel. Restaurants was also a little bit odd, three spaces per five seats, that's a lot of strange funny math that you have to do. And so I made that actually a little less stringent at one space per two at half seats. I saw stuff all over the, the world with different ratios for restaurants. I don't know why, it's nothing standard, it's just whatever each city wants to do, I guess. But I think that we'll still be fine with that, even though it's a little bit tighter. The current one would basically be one and a half spaces per two and a half seats. This is, we can't have half seats, of course, but. We're probably not gonna have a restaurant that only has two and a half seats anyways. Retail stores and shops, other than large appliance and furniture stores. Would be one to three hundred instead of one to one seventy-five, one seventy-five is a strange number, two is a visit. There's no rhyme or reason why that's so, so strict. And then finally, the any other uses I changed be one to three hundred. And if there's a weird case that we can't find a similar use, we can't figure out what. How to describe it, in that case, I would ask for an analysis of the parking situation. To try to figure out what sort of traffic is gonna be generated. This is a catch-all. Cause I know I'm gonna have somebody come in that has a use that's not specifically listed on here. And we're not gonna know what to do, so we use the one to three hundred. If they really wanted a different ratio, like a one to five hundred, that's when they would have to prove that. That that's gonna be sufficient for what their traffic is. Normally, I'm not gonna require them to do this special analysis to figure out if they're gonna get sued. A lot of businesses today actually do it anyways, they have their own formula. And it usually ends up having more spaces than our minimum. Dollar General had something like that, they had a number of spaces they wanted for that building. It was more than we required, that's what they wanted, that's what they built. Cause they know, based on the experience on their other stores, what kind of traffic they're. Which is great, they've already done their homework, they've met their minimum. So. Any questions or concerns about minimum parking? It's just very dry, I know it is. The only reason I'm telling you about it is because, well, you can know what I wrote down. I don't wanna just throw information at you without telling you what I wrote down. Um, that last little paragraph there is the same as the one earlier, it just had some strange language related to fencing. When you build a parking lot in like a residential area, like say a church builds a parking lot in a residential district, it has to be screen. And there was some weird language in there. Well, this one says, such fence shall be located within one foot of the front yard sideline. I don't know what that even means. I don't know why that language was in there, and so I just proposed ten feet wide. And then. That other language in that second sentence just kind of, it's in defense regulations, that's what we're looking for. Yeah, question? So Articles twenty-three through twenty-six. I'm not touching those. Article twenty-three on telecommunications towers, we actually did some revisions six, seven years ago. Anyways, so that's, that's been touched, it's, it's not, there's no necessary changes there. And the same thing with those other sections. It just really don't need to touch it right now. Well, that brings us into signs. This is really the last major. I'll try to hurry through this. First of all, part of the reason that we have two temporary sign regulations, I think I probably covered this at one point. There's a Supreme Court case that was established, you can't regulate signs based on what's on there. So I can't, in order to comply with that ruling, I can't call something a political sign. Because you have to look at the sign to figure out what's on it. It's goofy, um, there was, there's a whole story behind that, I'm not gonna talk about it right now. But the other problem is, the state of Kansas, after that came down, passed a whole bunch of legislation about. Where political signs in particular could be placed during election season. And so what we did when we rewrote this. I don't find batteries issues too. Was separated out, so during the election season, temporary signs are regulated a little bit different than they are outside of the election season. So that we can comply with that statute. The only real difference between these two sections is that. During the election season, because of the way that's written, is you can put political signs, temporary signs, on the right way. You're not supposed to put them on the right way anyway. That's the only difference. But I also changed some of the language in here, cause it's causing me some problems, specifically in election season. And just really simplified it. So the way I did it, instead of saying that you could have a certain sign in a certain district, is I said, residential districts. You can have six square foot sign, which is actually bigger than most of them, because of a little flexibility. And non-residential property, not district. Non-residential property, you can go up to thirty-two square feet. The reason I wanted to do that is right now, in a commercial district, you can't have those larger signs, according to the regulations. And that's caused a lot of problems. That it's not impossible to enforce, because we do it. But it's a little too strict, in my opinion, to keep them out of commercial districts, so that's why I changed that to where that is allowed. It's the same, the, those size requirements are the same, both those temporary sections. So the other part of the regulations were. I changed anything was to specific district sign regulations. So you might remember, um, a couple of years ago, twenty twenty-one. We had a case where the high school was trying to put up that new sign. And it didn't meet the regulations of the public district. And they were throwing out all sorts of things about why that was kind of unreasonable, and maybe to an extent it was. But ultimately, the variance was issued. And so what I did was change the regulations, propose, loosen it up a little bit. So that if the same sign was to be brought before, brought before me, it wouldn't require a variance. That's what I was trying to get rid of. I kind of got that from, from the planning commission over the past several seasons we've been doing. And even the board of zoning controls, where we want to reduce the number of requested variances. So if we're issuing variances anyways, that's telling you most likely that we need to change regulations. So that's what I've done in this case. Just, just made the sign allowable size a little bit bigger. And also increased the side, the height a little bit higher, the fifteen foot is similar to what you would see in a. A com- the lower and commercial districts, so I think it'd be fine there. They would still have to meet like. The two hundred feet. If they're within two hundred feet of residential property, they would still have to turn their electronic card off, that regulation doesn't change. The other change that I made in this is to industrial, same sort of scenario. Creepstone actually is what triggered me to change this. They wanted to build these directional signs around their campus to help the truck drivers get to. Where they're supposed to be, so they don't get turned around, right now, they have signs, temporary ones, they want to make sure. Well. The regulations only allow them to be ten foot tall. And in one of those signs that's behind an eight-foot-tall fence, it's where it has. And in one of those signs that's behind an eight-foot tall fence, it's where it has to be put. So you can't, the truckers couldn't see, it would be totally worthless like that. And so I allowed them to go up to 12 to get over that. But this would have, they wanted 15 or 24. So this would have, this, if this would have been a place, they would have been allowed to put those up. And then the other thing I did, because when you get to a campus as large as Creekstone's. You may need multiple signs to identify where they're supposed to go. And so what this regulation allows, for every 300 feet of street from it, they can add another additional sign. Without being a requirement. Technically, the way I approve what they're doing is not fully compliant with the statute, if I'm being totally honest. Uh, because they have four, I think total signs, it'll be. But I was kind of following this, this, even though it's not a specification. The other thing about those, their actual, their actual signage, it's not corporate trying to promote their brand better than they can trust it to be. That's why I was a little more lenient than, maybe I didn't show that. That, this makes that more compliant. And then of course, increases the height allowances to. Actually 25 feet is what they would be able to do. Any concerns about sign regulations or any questions? Article 28, planning management, we just did that. I'm gonna approach that again. Article 29, site plan review. That is the regulations we pulled out of subdivision regulations that we talked about back in June. Largely untouched, in fact, I don't think I touched any of them. Moved them a lengthwise, pulled some out and put it in another thing, we already talked about that. So that's all that section is, article 30. So that's all the articles, the only other thing that we need to talk about is the zoning map. I actually did go faster than I thought I was gonna do. So I did, I accidentally scrolled in. I'm gonna have to find it. So I proposed three changes to, like goodness. Be here all night trying to scroll. I proposed three changes to the zoning map, just three areas. Try to get it small enough where we can actually see it. So here's the first one. Today, this is all mixed use, this is, this is the intersection at Eighth and Radio Lane. What happened there was, when John Bruce had his business at Sixth and Radio. Um, ran into some compliance issues, and we were gonna rezone it, and then, but we were doing this process at the same time. And so how I as staff appeased him was we made a mixed-use district. It really worked, it wasn't that out of the ordinary, because you had Presbyterian management crossing the crossway, it's not that big of a deal. Well, at that time, I moved the district all the way over to Eighth Street. I don't think that's necessary, in fact, our future land use map actually has, matches what I have here. And so we wouldn't be rezoning, of course he's not there anymore. Uh, where John Bruce's property was, but from the alley back to Eighth Street. Take that back to the R2 district, that's what I was proposing there. And again, that matches what we approved on the future land use map. Um, the second will area. Is this funny little sliver here, that's where the, uh, bike trail, hopefully someday is built there, I don't. I start to wonder myself if it's ever gonna be built. This used to be a rubber right away, so it wasn't zoned. This just gives it a zoning designation. And obvious, it's under city ownership, that's where the trail is going, so public makes sense. That wasn't, well, it might have been on the future land use map, I can't remember. The last one, and this of course is also changed on the future land use map. This whole area, minus a couple of these little pieces here, was mixed use, or is mixed use. If you remember that conversation I had, originally the thinking was that the bypass, if it went through here, might generate some interest in some other thing. Well, that's still not come to fruition. And so what I proposed was zone that all back to the R2 district, that's what we're seeing there anyways. We're not seeing people wanting to use it as mixed use anyways, so I don't think it's gonna be a big deal. The districts that are inside this box that are not mixed use. There's a couple of industrial, and there's a little commercial one there, would be unchanged. Just, just what is mixed use would change to R2. The only other thing, and I didn't put it on the map, was this area. Um, I thought about having us rezon this entire piece to commercial, but I don't think it's necessary. I think we could just wait until we have proposals that don't, if they don't meet mixed use. We could approach it at that time, and we could just rezon it, when, whenever they make those requests. That red section there is where the truck stop will eventually go, and yes, that is, so. Believe it or not, it's way closer than it's ever been. It'll happen. That's how just really wonky happens, but. The demand for, for a truck stop is extremely high still here. That's not going away. We gotta figure out a way to get some of those cattle trucks off of 61st Road. And this gives them facilities, they'll be able to. You know, take a shower, eat, go to the bathroom, that kind of thing, they don't have that option right now. So any, any other suggestions or any concerns with, with what I proposed on the zoning map? So what happens here, instead of this being a rezone, this would just be adopted as part of the amendments. And so basically, we would have a brand-new zoning map. Where I'll rezon in certain smaller areas, but this also means that we do not notify the people. We're just rezoning, and we're doing it as the city, which we can do.
What is the primary difference between mixed use and R2?
The big difference between those two districts is the mixed-use district allows some of the lower-end commercial uses. The R2 district only allows residential. And then obviously, there's some businesses that fit what we call home occupation.
Or the Sawmill, for the.
Sawmill would definitely not be, actually, we don't allow it in mixed use.
Right, Sawmill? Small hobby building?
Now, hobby one would probably, most likely fit under the home occupation. So it would be like that, I mean, that's what you're talking about. Uh, fair question. Yeah, I, I would say that you, your small hobby style would shop. You had a whole bunch of, you had a whole bunch of customers that were regularly coming and shopping in your lottery or whatever.
Okay, Josh, thanks for the zoning rig change, changes, and any other items on discuss for August?
The only thing I would suggest, um, it's just not a separate item, it's kind of just continuation of this. Um, would be that, I was originally gonna have you set a public hearing for next month, but I don't think that's advisable. Because of the change we run it. And so what I'll probably do next month is just bring back that section. And if that's the only thing on the agenda, we may just push it. I do have somebody that has some interest in applying for a rezone, so if that comes up, I will, we will have. But if it doesn't, I'll probably just go ahead and push it, so you guys don't have to come to a meeting, just for that one section. And besides that, we haven't had a break in a long time. So that's, that's my proposal, is that we probably won't have a meeting next month unless that application comes in. Which we said, I don't know about that, but.
Okay, well, nothing else, make caution adjourn.
Oh, we're here.
Second grade, see you next month.